And I did hear that.
But am I correct in my statement that there's been no testimony offered as to the value of this commercial enterprise as a business, one way or another, by your, I'll call it your team, is that correct?
I can only speak for myself, I have not offered any testimony in that regard.
But again, you're not aware of anyone else who has, are you?
Uh, I'm not.
Do you think it matters on the value of land if string beans are grown as opposed to grapes?
It can make a difference to the business, it would not make a difference to the value of the land.
So if I want to buy a piece of property on which there exists a developed vineyard, and I'm not talking about business value, I'm talking about real estate value, is it your testimony that that value of that land is no more than a piece of property on which mums or string beans or tomatoes are grown?
What I'm saying is that in looking at the value as you have suggested it, it would be necessary to strip away the going concern value, to remove the value of the business from the total value package, in order to arrive at a conclusion as to the value of the real estate.
How about the -- excuse me, I butchered them, I'm sorry.
And it is my testimony that once you strip away the going concern value of the business, that the value of the real estate, the land, the deed restricted agricultural land is unchanged.
How about the value of the crop? Is that part of the business value or part of the land value?
Business.
Business?
Yes.
So if the value of a crop is very significant as opposed to being very insignificant, that could certainly impact the value of the business concern, correct?
There's a whole series of hypotheticals built into that, and I'm not prepared to provide an answer to my question.
Thank you. Are you aware that, are you aware of the restrictions that exist in the deed of easement that is generated and filed with the county clerk's office when a property goes into the farm land preservation program?
I have read and reviewed all of the deeds for these properties.
Are you familiar with the restrictions contained in the deed of easement for my client's property?
I have read them, but I do not have them committed to memory. Each of those deeds was 40 pages or so in length, and they were quite detailed, but I have reviewed them.
Are you familiar with the activities that a farm which is deed restricted, are you familiar with the activities they can engage in under that deed of easement?
I do recall reading that provision in the deeds.
And what can they do?
I can't cite a chapter and verse, but it needed to be related to agricultural activities.
And they can construct farm buildings?
On the free condition that those buildings will be utilized for agricultural purposes.
And they can engage in agritourism?
Yes.
And they can sell their own agricultural output and related products on their property?
I believe that was the case.
So all of those things that are protected under the Right to Farm Act, someone who owns a deed restricted preserve farm can engage in, correct?
All of that is discussed in some detail in the deeds for these properties.
Well, I'm asking you if they can engage in all those activities, whether or not they are a preserve farm?
Generally, that's true.
Thank you, I don't have any additional questions at this point. I don't know if you want to do it by witness or...
No, I'd like you to do all your questions now, so let's follow up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Mr. Sanders. We know it's been a while since you testified, so I think we'll all try and get our cobwebs out and do the best we can here, Mr. Sanders.
Please speak into the mic.
Sure, I'll do the best I can here.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders, take us back to...
Mr. Spassero, would you be more comfortable sitting?
Yes. No?
No.
Okay, thanks. Take us back to 2000, I think it was 2011, when this gas transmission line was installed? Is that the year in which it was installed? Can you regulate now?
2012.
2012, thank you, I appreciate your correction. Do you know what approvals from the municipality, if any, were required to install that transmission line?
In terms of the installation itself, the permitting, construction permitting, and road opening permits were approved by the town.
Were there any zoning approvals that were necessary, only then perhaps a zoning permit that allowed you to get your construction permits?
Uh, no.
Not aware of any?
No zoning permits required for the low-grade pipeline.
This pipeline, where does it come from and where does it lead to?
When we're talking about the pipeline, we're talking about the transmission system. This pipeline was constructed between Route 36 and Laurel Avenue down to 520 and Holmdel Road.
But isn't this pipeline part of a larger distribution system?
Transmission system.
And what is the breadth of that transmission system? I'm trying to get an idea of the scope of this project, not the project that's before the board, but when this pipeline was put in, why it was put in, and why it was put in, where it was put in, that's really what I'm trying to find out.
This particular pipeline was initially installed as part of an overall project, which was to replace, from an integrity standpoint, an aged pipeline system that we had on Holmdel Road. In terms of the entire scope of the project, this pipeline was also part of the initial project to replace older vintage pipelines.
And the scope of that project went far beyond the confines of the borders of Holmdel Township, correct?
Uh, no, that's, yes, you're correct, yes.
When this particular pipeline was constructed and installed, did you know then that you would need a regulator somewhere in the vicinity of where you're installing it?
As part of my previous testimony, there are two components to this project. One was the pipeline, and subsequently would be the regulator station.
So you knew from the get-go that at some point in time you would be needing a regulator?
Well, with the project itself, you have, when we're designing this project, we're looking at cost benefit, so, yes, I've mentioned that previously in testimony, that you have your system piece, and then you also have your regulation, which will reduce the pressure, so, yes.
Part of the whole package.
Part of the package, yes.
Did you know when you, when the pipeline was installed, that you would also need a heater, or is that something that surfaced as a result of something you didn't anticipate?
No, this station is part, the heater would be part of the station itself.
I believe you testified that when this pipeline went in, that there were approximately 6,100 gas meters in Holmdel Township, is that correct?
Uh, around that, yes.
And were all of those customers being provided with adequate gas service at the time?
In terms of the fact that we've not had any issues, yes. Again, I've testified to the fact that adequate is a relative term, if you look at Holmdel, Holmdel in its particular sense by itself, yes.
But all of the, all of the customers were getting all the gas they wanted and needed, correct?
There were no related averages, yes.
Were new customers being provided with will-serve letters in the event there was new construction, or had you reached maximum capacity?
I'm not aware of that, I'm not on the marketing side, so I'm not sure where the information comes from.
Are you aware of, are you aware of any moratorium on new connections because of the inability to provide sufficient natural gas to potential customers in the area?
Not related to the transmission system.
Well, were there any moratoriums for users or potential users in Holmdel Township? For any reason?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
The mic may not be working, can you, you're not really coming up on the speaker, so maybe...
Is it off?
Is it on?
Yeah. Can you hit it again?
It's not working.
There we go.
I may have inadvertently hit the button here, I'm sorry. Do you know what the current number of meters are that are being serviced in Holmdel Township? Has the number changed appreciably from 2012?
The number that I gave you was the current number of meters. Since 2012, I do not have that information specifically, so I couldn't answer that.
I want to make sure, I thought your testimony was that in 2012, there were approximately 6,100 meters, is that, did I misunderstand your testimony?
Uh, yes.
So your current demand is 6,100 meters?
The current demand, previous to my testimony was 6,100. I believe the total, the total current number for residential is 6,100 to 6,200, it's in that range.
That's current?
That's current, yes.
And do you know what the demand was for residential in 2012?
I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Do you know if there's been an appreciable change?
I do not know what that number would be.
I want to focus on the particular type of regulator that's being used here, and I heard discussion that the applicant's taking the position that this is not within the jurisdiction of the board. But the reason I'm asking these questions is, there is something that is within the jurisdiction of the board, and that is, you need to grant variance relief, and you need to consider the positive and negative criteria. You may not be able to dictate what type of regulator goes in, but, can I finish? Thanks, but...
Is this a question-answer?
No, it's not a question-answer, I'm trying to lay a foundation for why I'm asking these questions. That's all that I'm doing. Do you want me to just ask questions?
I'm trying to give you great deference, I'm sure you can see that, but yeah, I think you should. You'll get a chance on the next hearing date to...
I understand that, but I, but I, okay, I just anticipated that there would be an objection to the questions, because I heard comments to the effect that it wasn't within the jurisdiction of this board to decide what type of regulator was being used. All I'm trying to say is, you do have the jurisdiction to assess the positive and negative criteria, and unless you know what...
Again, I thought this was a question and answer across examination period, not a statement.
Fine, then I'll just proceed with questions. You're familiar with the type of regulator that is proposed here, and were importantly, perhaps because of its size, the heater, correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Are there regulators that are constructed completely underground?
Yes, there are.
Was consideration given to constructing such a regulator in this location?
As I testified, there are different types of regulated facilities, being that this is a Tier 1 facility, it would not qualify for below grade.
When you say would qualify, what do you mean by wouldn't qualify?
I testified to the fact that we have various functions that we were required to perform at a Tier 1 facility, so if you're reducing the pressure in a certain amount, a heater is required, and that was testified to previously.
So let's focus on the heater that's proposed here. Is there more than one type of heater that is used to reduce the, I'm sorry, increase the temperature of the gas with using regulators such as these?
Uh, yes, I did testify to that previously.
And can you describe these different heaters, just generally speaking? How many different, different types of heaters might be available to perform the same function?
Um, it varies, there are various heater types.
And would it be fair to say that they have various dimensions? And would it be fair to say that they have a different number of stacks?
You're talking hypothetically, it depends on the heater type, and the function that's required is the reason you have a regulation, so, the general answer is that it could be any number of any type.
Are there, what's the, the height of the tallest part of this heater is what from the ground level?
Uh, the vent height is 15 feet.
From the ground level?
Yes, that's correct.
And are there heaters out there where the height is less than 15 feet?
I'm sure there are.
Given the concern that has been expressed about the mass and the height of this heater, why hasn't consideration been given to a heater that has a different size or configuration?
I'm going to jump to that. I think we've stated our position on the record as to the design of the facility, and both the BPU and the gas company's exclusive jurisdiction over that. The determination was made that this is the most appropriate heater for this facility.
With all due respect, the BPU may have exclusive jurisdiction to decide what type of heater.
Is there a question?
Yeah, I'm responding to your comment, and I think I should be afforded the opportunity to respond to your objection, that is what I'm doing, thank you. Your objection, as I understand it, is that BPU has exclusive jurisdiction, and my response is, this board has exclusive jurisdiction to decide the positive and negative criteria associated with variance relief, and unless and until, let me finish. And unless and until you know what alternatives are out there, you cannot determine whether this, whether the impact can be reduced, and whether it will have a substantial adverse impact on the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. That is within your jurisdiction.
I think that was addressed by the board, and the applicant's attorney had the opportunity to go there, and she refused, or she objected, and said that's their jurisdiction. As I indicated, the board obviously will, can take that response into their considerations. I mean, obviously, we don't have an answer, they're not going to give us an answer, but we can, obviously, this board can take that in, as you indicated, when they're considering the criteria, and we do agree with that, so...
That's all.
But I don't think she's going to, as she said, I'm sorry, Ms. Skidmore indicated she's not going to provide an answer, and...
But I do understand, and I note the objection, and, but I'll just ask you this question, Mr. Sanders. It is a fact that there are other heaters available that are of different size, different height, different dimension, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
After a month, it's hard to read your own writing. Mr. Sanders, if this application is denied, what alternatives are available to your company? And I'm talking about the legal process, I mean, I'm talking about the process of how would you reduce the pressure, and how would you control the temperature?
Um, hang on a second, I'm...
I'm a little unclear on that question as well, but the gas company will proceed, I'm confused as to what you're asking, Mr. Sanders.
My question, I thought was straightforward, but let me see if I can rephrase it.
Check the mic, please.
He's up, just a moment.
If this applica...
It's good, good, good.
If this application is denied, and you have no legal recourse, what is Plan B for the gas company?
Can I just clarify so that I understand, and perhaps it'll help, correct? Operationally, you mean?
Yes, operationally.
Operationally, what would, in the meantime, what would be done, is that what you're saying?
Not in the meantime, if, this was simply a no-go, if this board denied your application, and if you went to either Superior Court, or you went to the BPU, and at the end of the day, everyone said no, operationally, what would New Jersey Natural Gas do?
Well, I think, I think you can, you can refer to your testimony in the past, you know, operationally, how the situation has been handled, but, because you're not asking us legally how we would afford, Mr. Sanders obviously can't answer that.
No, I'm, you have all the rights of, you may prevail here, you may have rights of appeal in various venues, I understand all of that, I'm just talking from an operational standpoint, I'm not asking Mr. Sanders a legal question, I'm asking him an operational question. If the powers that be came to you and said, "We can't build this regulator station," what do you do?
You can answer that.
From this board, from this board standpoint?
I'm sorry?
From this board, the Holmdel Board standpoint?
No, from your standpoint, from an operational standpoint, from the standpoint of New Jersey Natural Gas, what do you, when I say you, what does the company do?
The company would, would appeal, obviously, but...
Mr. Sanders, and you're going to correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Spassero, I think what Mr. Spassero is saying is something you've already testified to, until another solution was obtained, what have you been doing up until this date? I think, is that what you're really asking, Mr. Spassero?
No, I can tell you what we're doing currently in the meantime, which is that we could, we would continue to run the system as we do now, which I've already testified as well, is, is not sustainable, and there will be impacts to the efficiency and performance of the system as demand increases over time for this particular location, as you're adding meters. Right now, what we're doing, we have a temporary regulator, we are operating the system very ineffectively, we're burdening other regulators that are aimed at feeding the same system, so that's the concern that we have, in terms of being that unsustainable way of operating the system.
Could a regulator and heater be constructed outside of the orders of Holmdel Township that would address this problem?
Not in our opinion, no.
And what do you base that opinion upon?
As we testified, this, our planning and engineering group do a tremendous job of forecasting near-term, long-term marketing impacts, overall system enhancements, and based on our growth models and our flow studies, this is not something that we look at very lightly, we've been looking at this for quite some time, and the analysis is very extensive. And that's the basis of that opinion.
I think you're referring to studies prepared by others, and analyses by others, is that correct?
By our company.
By your company, by individuals employed by your company or consultants of your company, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So is it a fact that you're expressing the opinion of others, not necessarily yourself?
I'm, you know, as an operational witness, the planning function, again, is part of my, of my department, but I'm not charged with that particular function.
Would it be fair to say that, and I'm not being disrespectful or demeaning, is that you do not know what alternatives are, you personally do not know what alternatives are available if this application is denied and you have no legal recourse?
No, I did testify that, based on my experience and based on the information that our teams bring together, is that this is not sustainable, this is an operational issue, we received that information from our planning group.
I'm struggling with what you added at the very end of your, your statement, are you testifying to what others have told you, or are you basing this on your own personal knowledge?
This is based on my personal knowledge and experience at the gas company for most 20 years.
And when you say the situation is not sustainable, what do you, what do you do with the application if this cannot be constructed? I really try, I'm...
I think I already asked that question, and we, and Mr. Sanders gave him his response.
I think his response was, "It's not sustainable," but he didn't say what he would do, he, he, his response was, "We're dealing with this on an interim basis, that it's not sustainable." I'm trying to understand, in the big picture, what happens, what is, what does New Jersey Natural Gas do if this, if this thing cannot be constructed in Holmdel Township?
And I think Mr. Sanders responded in terms, from an operational perspective, you made very clear that this wasn't a legal question you were asking him, he said something certainly he couldn't do. There were, obviously, there would be other steps taken by the company, but Mr. Sanders here is here to discuss the operations of this facility.
I understand that, and so, maybe I missed the answer, but if you could just tell us, what would the company do if you could not build this regulator and heater in Holmdel Township? What would you do, from an operation side?
I already answered that, I mentioned that we would continue to do what we're doing now, which we showed the pictures of the frozen regulators, we showed what we're doing now, we showed the increased risk associated with operating the system in this manner, and the effect that it potentially has on, on the Holmdel residents.
The situation as it exists now, that you say is not sustainable, has that existed from day one, since this pipeline became operational, or is it something of more recent vintage?
As I testified previously, this station went in as an interim, on an interim basis, and so the idea behind this was that it would be a short-term fix, because we had difficulties with siding, et cetera, it's, it's something that we've had to maintain.
Did this station go in at the same time that the pipeline went in, or was it installed afterwards?
The temporary station was, was put in anticipation of the pipeline.
So the station went in before the pipeline, so would it be fair to say that before the pipeline went in, you anticipated you were going to have this problem, and that's why the station was constructed?
No, the state, the station was a, an existing station that we used as a temporary solution when, when we changed and upgraded the pressure system. So, as I mentioned before, the station itself was a different type of station, a below-ground station. below ground station. When you increase the pressure, you, you increase the temperature drop, therefore you need another function, and it changes the priority of the station, so...
The change of use of this existing station, did that occur as soon as this pipeline became operational?
Uh, yes.
And that's been for the last six years?
That's correct.
You're familiar with the operation of the regulator and the heater that you propose here?
Yes, I am.
And do they function 365 days a year?
Yes.
The heater operates 365 days a year as well?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
So it's always running?
Based on the flow characteristics, the, the answer is still yes, but the heater isn't in operation during, because of the temperature drop, yes, I testified to that.
So once these, once the regulator and the heater, if they're installed, are functioning, they're always running? Is that your testimony?
Yes.
Do they ever get, does the heater ever get shut down for maintenance?
Yes.
How frequently?
I've testified to this, that we, we maintain heater on an annual basis.
Is there any noise associated with shutting this heater down or, or starting it up?
There is noise associated with starting up the, the heater or, and/or the regulator, yes, and we have sound abatement associated with that.
I believe the, the sound abatement testimony was related to the system as it operates, not as it starts up or shuts down. Is there any different or additional noise from an operational standpoint, if you know when the system starts up or shuts down?
Uh, no, that was a question that was raised by one of the board members at the last meeting.
And the answer to that is no?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Is there another regulator station similar to the one that's proposed here that exists in the state of New Jersey?
Can you repeat that?
Is there another regulator station similar to the one that you propose here? When I say regulator, regulator and heater, that is up and operational in the state of New Jersey?
Um, similar, but not the same, yes.
How, how is the one you're referring to, or the ones that you were referring to, different?
Um, every station is peculiar to the area that it serves. So we, we may have a, a location that has more demand, we may have a location that has less demand, so the, you know, most of our stations are not cookie cutter, they're built specifically for the end users in mind and the system demand.
Is there another regulator and heater that exists that are sufficiently similar that if this board and the public wanted to go and observe the way they operate as compared to hearing testimony as, as to how they operate? Are they out there for us to go and look at?
Um, I believe we, we, we do have other similar stations. Again, one of the reasons with the multitude of pictures is that, I, I also mentioned this as a question that one of the board members had, is that because you don't have the exact same parameters, you won't get the exact same equipment, you won't have the same heater, you may have different technology that's used there. So there, there is not another specific station that looks like this one.
It may not be exact, or they may not be exact, but are there any that are substantially similar that we can go and take a look at? Not only look at, but listen to?
There, there are other stations that are similar.
Substantially similar?
I'm not sure what that terminology would mean, substantially similar, because again, I, I mentioned the uniqueness of, of the stations themselves.
Where are these similar regulators and heaters located, can you tell us?
Um, we, we have, we have stations that, representative stations that are along the pollution Mars count.
I'm, I'm looking for addresses, sir, can you tell us where they are?
I can't tell you off, off the top of my head.
Can you tell me how many are similar?
Um, not off the top of my head.
Would you be kind enough to go back and either check your records or inquire of who might have this information, and provide us with the locations of facilities such as these that you described as similar? Can you provide that to us for the next meeting?
We'll take that under consideration and provide you with a response.
Are you going to take, provide it tonight, so we know, or do we have to start doing our own research?
I, I won't have that information for you tonight, I can tell you that right now.
I, I don't expect you to have the information tonight, but I would like to know whether you are going to try and acquire that information. I think we, we're entitled to know the answer to that tonight. If you need to confer with your client, or, fine, but I...
I'm confused as to why you would need to know that information tonight, I can't provide you the location.
I believe, because if you do not provide the, if you indicate you're not going to provide the information, then perhaps the public will have to do some of its own research to see what they can find. But if you're going to provide us with the locations of similar facilities, I think it, it's transparent, and it will let everybody know where we stand.
I, I don't think I'm going to be able to do that tonight.
To answer...
Nancy, is it fair, as, as far as if you can provide it, it can be done within a week?
Uh, that's true. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just not going to be able to do that tonight, here.
We haven't, we're just misunderstanding one another. I'm not asking you to provide the information tonight, I'm just asking for a commitment from you that you will provide that information.
I, I understand what you're saying.
If, the testimony was, if she can provide it, she'll do it within a week. She's not sure she can provide it, so she has to confirm with, confer with her client.
Fair enough, thank you.
And just ask Nancy if you do provide it to the board secretary, please, provide it to Mr. Sanders.
I do not think I have any additional questions of this week.
So, Mr. Spicero, you just told me 35 minutes, and now you're 40.
Okay.
What else, uh, who else do you think you have?
I just, I just have a few questions of Mr. Potanta, and I'm done.
How long do you think, because I have a room full of people, but I want to also give an opportunity to...
Do you want me to step away and see how it plays out? Like, you know, it's, it's up to you.
Yeah, yes.
Why don't you give a break? Shocked off. How did I know you'd be back?
I don't know.
All right, before I get to you, if you'll just call it, I'm the last to get to you. Who else in the room? So let's go with the, the two witnesses that we've heard from already, Mr. Otto and Mr. Sanders. Who has questions of those two witnesses? Okay, um, I'm going to... All right. Okay, um...
Quick.
Yeah, I'm going to give you three minutes. Demetrius, give it to him.
For, for all of my questions.
I'm the bad guy.
You can always come back up.
Will you stop the clock for response? All right.
Well, I'm, I'm, if your question's out, and they're in the middle of responding, I'm not going to...
Okay.
Is this just Mr. Otto, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, but again, I'm going to give everyone time, I promise, I told you I would, I'm going to do that. But just keep in mind, it's now, you know, week 10 after 9, and I do want to give everybody a chance to be heard, so please try and to ask questions only, and to not duplicate what other people have done.
What about questions for Ms. Skidmore?
She's not a witness.
But what about questions regarding her prior statements?
You can't...
She's not a witness.
She can ask questions if Ms. Skidmore's not a witness. You can ask questions at this point of Mr. Otto and Mr. Sanders. Mr. Yanello.
Mr. Marchello. Mr. Sanders.
State your name.
Jay Yanello, 18 Mile Drive Drive.
Doesn't everyone know that?
Yeah.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be pretty quick, actually. Mr. Sanders, when was this specific regulator that is, was purchased for this specific site that you showed us in pictures? When was this purchased and delivered?
The, the regulator?
The regulator, the, the bar, excuse me.